Half a day and welcome. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today's Wednesday, June 22, 2022, and the time is 9:07 a.m. In compliance with the open government law, notices for this public hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post on Wednesday, June 15th, and again on Monday, June 20th, 2022, and posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal and livestreamed via the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. Notices were also disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. I'd like to recognize my colleagues who are here with us today. Our Legislative Secretary, Senator Amanda Shelton; our Majority Leader, Senator Talina Nelson; our Minority Leader, Senator Quix Duñez; Senator Anthony Ada; Senator Joanne Brown. Thank you, colleagues, for being here this morning. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the Chair before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. We have one agenda item for this 9:00 a.m. hearing, and that is Bill Number 264-36COR. It's introduced by the Committee on Air Transportation, Parks, Tourism, Higher Education and the Advancement of Women, Youth and Senior Citizens by request of the Congressman Manhobin Guahan, the Guam Youth Congress, in accordance with 2 GCA 7102. And it's an act to add a new Chapter 93 to Title IX Guam Code annotated relative to providing family members of an individual who fear, who they fear is a danger to himself, herself or others, new tools to prevent gun violence, and to cite this act as the Gun Violence Prevention Order Act of 2021. So the sponsor of the bill, the bill is introduced again by the Committee on Youth, but the original sponsor is at the request, it's at the request of the Congressman Manhobin Guahan. The representative of the Congressman Manhobin Guahan is not able to make it this morning, so I'm going to invite the Committee on Youth Chairperson, Senator Shelton, to please read the statement on behalf of the Congressman Manhobin. Senator?
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker. Good morning to our colleagues and to the public. I'd like to also welcome all of our youth interns who are here in the Legislature, joining us from the Department of Youth Affairs Summer Internship Program. Welcome, all of you. We're happy to have you here. And thank you very much, Madam Chair, for hearing Bill Number 264-36, introduced by the Committee on Air Transportation, Parks, Tourism, Higher Education and the Advancement of Women, Youth and Senior Citizens by request of the Congressman Manhobin Guahan and the Guam Youth Congress in accordance with 2 GCA Section 7102. Bill Number 264-36 is the Gun Violence Prevention Order Act of 2021, and it seeks to add preemptive measures necessary in combating future gun violence and providing family members a method of depriving the right to purchase, receive, own or otherwise possess a firearm from individuals who they believe possess a danger to himself, herself or others by adding a new Chapter 93 to Title IX GCA. This act will establish a gun violence prevention order and warrant law, allow the Office of Attorney General to maintain and computerize database of all gun violence protection orders issued by the Supreme Court, and allow the Guam Police Department to establish a procedure that requires a law enforcement officer to, in conjunction with performing a wellness check on an individual, check whether the individual is listed on the firearm database or Registry of Guam. And, Madam Speaker, this, this bill went through the process of the Youth Congress, was passed by our youth policymaking body as a, a measure to address the rising concerns of gun violence in our community, but in our wider national community that we've seen with the very tragic cases that we know with help and prevention and preemptive measures may have been prevented, may have been avoided, to keep the loss of so many innocent children and people in our community. And those are experiences that may seem far away from our people here on island, but we'd like to prevent from ever happening again in our community. And so, Madam Speaker, I thank you today for hearing this bill and for the Guam Youth Congress for their courage and their foresight to introduce and pass such a measure to keep our community safe and to especially keep our children and innocent people in our community safe from this type of harm. Sidoos Masi.
Sidoos Masi, Senator Shelton. Also, I'd like to welcome Senator James Moylan, who's also here, and also the interns from the Attorney General's Office, and, thank, welcome, and they're here to observe today's hearing, together with other representatives from the Attorney General's Office. For the record, the Committee's invited and requested feedback on Bill 264-36COR from the judiciary of Guam, the Office of the Attorney General, the Public Defender Service Corporation, the Guam Police Department, the Guam Bar Association, Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. We have received a response from the Attorney General's Office indicating that... Half a day, Speaker. We won't be able to attend this morning's hearing, but we'll submit what we can in response to your requests. Regarding Bill 264, we are in full support of efforts to prevent gun violence in our community. We haven't been able to complete an analysis of the fiscal impact of the bill in its current form on our budget, but we do recognize, as did JOG, in its fiscal note on this bill, that, as in most cases, added mandates are expectedly associated with added costs. If we're able to determine a specific fiscal impact, we can provide that to the Committee before the closing date for testimony. Substantively, we note that last summer, the DOJ, Department of Justice, issued model legislation for extreme risk protection orders, including its commentary. We hope this info will be helpful to the Committee and the Legal Bureau as this bill proceeds through the legislative process. We've seized Senator Shelton here as the Chair of the sponsoring committee. Our office also provided this info to the Guam Youth Congress Vice Speaker Labang. Sidoos Masi, Division of General Counsel, Office of the Attorney General of Guam. So they've attached the Department of Justice model legislation and also gave a link. That's from the Attorney General of Guam's office. We also have a response from the Supreme Court of Guam that says, "Thank you for your letter dated June 15 with an invitation to provide testimony. I met with the judiciary's administration to discuss the proposed bills. The administration is currently in the process of vetting the proposed bills. I plan to meet with the Superior Court judges for comment and input on the bills. Written testimony will be provided within 10 days following the public hearing," since Saramente F. Philip Carbajito, Chief Justice. We also have written testimony, and all these written testimonies have been provided to all senators and are available. The other written testimony is from Attorney Anthony R. Camacho. He writes, "Good morning, Chairperson Terlay and members of the Committee. It's a privilege to come before you today. I'm here to oppose the passage of Bill Number 264, which is also known as the Gun Violence Prevention Order Act of 2021. As will be shown below, the bill should not be passed because it is duplicative, unnecessary, and because it diminishes the constitutional and organic act rights of Guam's firearm owners. The bill's duplicative because the person it seeks to protect already have sufficient access to the courts to obtain a protective order expeditiously pursuant to 7 GCA 40101 at sequence. Said protective order can include the temporary removal of firearms from the residence or the temporary suspension of the respondent's Guam firearms identification card if the court deems such actions are necessary to protect the complainant from further abuse or threats. Additionally, the class of persons who may apply for an order of protection are greater than those contemplated by the bill, which limits the persons who can apply for an order to confiscate a respondent's firearms to the respondent's spouse, child, parent, legal guardian, sibling, grandchild or grandparent. Finally, protective orders issued pursuant to 7 GCA 40101 must be recorded in Guam's Registry for Protection, which is maintained by the Superior Court of Guam, and the information contained in the registry is available at all times to a court, a law enforcement agency and other governmental agencies upon request. Therefore, persons who may be threatened by their household members who may have firearms already have strong, available and expeditious access to the courts to obtain a protective order, which may include the removal of the respondent's firearms from the home or the temporary suspension of the respondent's Guam firearms identification card. And by voting against the passage of Bill 264, the Guam Legislature will avoid the cost of developing and maintaining a separate database for firearm confiscation orders which would be required by Bill 264. Passage of Bill 264 is unnecessary because firearm violence on Guam is very low. Specifically, Guam's overall rate of violent crime inclusive of murder is approximately 6.32 persons per million people. In comparison for the rest of the United States, it is approximately 42.01 persons per million people, which is seven times higher than Guam. In 2017, it was estimated that there were approximately 20,000 privately owned firearms on Guam. Just two years later, in 2019, the seven murders reported that year, only two of these murders were committed with a firearm. Hence, the use of firearms on Guam to commit violent crimes remains low, which indicates that the passage of Bill 264 is unnecessary. If the bill is duplicative and unnecessary, what were the bill's authors' motivation for creating it? That is easily answered by a careful review of the text of the bill, which strongly indicates that it is meant to diminish the constitutional and organic act rights of some of Guam's citizens for the simple reason that they own a firearm. Currently, if a person seeks to obtain a protective order against a respondent, they must prove that the respondent abused or threatened to abuse them by a preponderance of the evidence. In contrast, Bill 264 has a much lower threshold to confiscate a person's firearms, which is reasonable suspicion. Hence, this lower evidentiary standard, which specifically targets firearm owners, makes it very likely that the real motivation of the bill's author was firearm confiscation instead of any real concern for the prevention of firearm violence. Further, due to the fact that violent firearms crimes on Guam are very low... would not justify the bill's lower evidentiary standard if the bill is enacted into law and a court were to test... So we lost internet service on, on the YouTube, our, our link, so we're gonna hold until that is restored. Apparently, the TV is still on. Thank you. Thank you. We're back on with our YouTube connection. So I was reading testimony from Anthony R. Camacho, Esquire. Attorney Camacho wrote to the Committee in opposition of the bill. I'm going to summarize the pages that I had already read. The bill is duplicative because the person it seeks to protect already have sufficient access to the courts to obtain a protective order expeditiously pursuant to 7 GCA 40101. And he describes that protection... passage of Bill Number 264 is unnecessary because firearm violence on Guam is very low. And so he describes the, that Guam's overall rate of violent crime inclusive of murder is approximately 6.32 persons per million compared to the rest of the United States, which is 42.01 persons per million people, seven times higher than on Guam. In 2017, there were approximately 20,000 privately owned firearms on Guam. Two years later, in 2019, seven murders reported that year. Only two were committed with a firearm. Hence, the use of firearms on Guam to commit violent crimes remains low, which indicates that the passage of Bill 264 is unnecessary. And this is where we got cut off. If the bill is duplicative and unnecessary, what were the bill's authors' motivation for creating it? That is easily answered by a careful review of the text of the bill, which strongly indicates that it is meant to diminish the constitutional and organic act rights of Guam citizens for the simple reason that they own a firearm. Currently, if a person seeks to obtain a protective order against a respondent, they must prove that the respondent abused or threatened to abuse them by a preponderance of the evidence. In contrast, Bill 264 has a much lower threshold to confiscate a person's firearms, which is reasonable suspicion. Hence, this lower evidentiary standard, which specifically targets firearm owners, makes it very likely that the real motivation of the bill's authors was firearms confiscation instead of any real concern for the prevention of firearm violence. Further, due to the fact that violent firearms crimes on Guam are very low and will not justify the bill's lower evidentiary standard, if the bill is enacted into law and a court were to test its constitutionality by applying a strict scrutiny standard, it is likely that a court would find the lower evidentiary standard to be a violation of the firearm owner's right to equal protection under the law. Therefore, the bill diminishes the constitutional and organic act rights of Guam's firearm owners. Accordingly, I oppose a passage of Bill 264 because it is duplicative, unnecessary, and because it diminishes the constitutional and organic act rights of Guam's firearm owners, submitted this 21st day of June, 2022, by Anthony R. Camacho, Esquire, with his address. And the Senator has read the statement of the sponsor of the bill, which is Vice Speaker Al Edrich Labang of the 33rd Guam Youth Congress. And we have a fiscal note from BBMR, which indicates that... "Per correspondence with the judiciary of Guam, it is difficult to determine the full fiscal impact that the judiciary would experience without an estimated number of anticipated requests for the prevention orders and/or warrants contemplated to be issued under this bill's provisions. The judiciary stated that enactment of this bill may create an additional workload for the current judicial officers and their respective staff. Dependent on the number of anticipated cases, the judiciary may need additional personnel to process and adjudicate such matters. As such, the judiciary estimates a minimum cost impact of $199,008.5, $111,000 for salaries, $72,000 for benefits and $15,000 for operational costs." The Office of Attorney General will also be impacted by this bill, but there is no fiscal impact estimation from their office. That is from the fiscal note that the Committee received from the BBMR, which is the Bureau of Budget and Management Resources. All right, so there are, there is no one else here to present testimony, but I would open it up to my colleagues if they have any questions or comments. Senator Shelton? All right. Senator Duñez?
Sidoos Masi, Madam Chair. I think for the benefit of our young folks here today to join us and kind of engage and learn this process, unfortunately, today, we don't have individuals testifying, but I want to provide some comments so that maybe you can get an idea of the back and forth that happens within this legislative hall. As you can see, the Speaker of the Youth Congress has written a very lengthy and informative testimony. But then you also can see where another attorney, esteemed attorney, who is, of course, certified by the bar, Mr. Camacho, to do, you know, to, to provide, or to be a lawyer and to be an officer of the court, and he provides a very different perspective, one that I will say, I'm willing to go on the record and say, I agree with. I think it is important when we have legislation such as this, and a matter that is this serious, because it is very serious, and I certainly can respect the reason for the introduction or the discussion of the bill from the Youth Congress. But I think not just this public hearing should happen on this issue. I believe we should move on this bill with further hearings, what we normally call in the legislative hall here, roundtables. And that is to bring more individuals to the table to discuss this issue and to debate kind of the veracity of the need for this at this time, particularly in Guam. For the benefit of the youth that have joined us, Guam has some of the most strict gun laws in the entire nation. I would dare say more than likely, more strict than every single state or other territory. And the need to register firearms, to, to have all of the licensure and everything else required to, to carry a firearm and background checks and all the other things that go into place, you know, are very, very extremely strict. Fortunately, and we hope it stays this way, we do have, as Attorney Camacho points out, very low incidences of gun violence on Guam, thank God, and we pray that that continues to be the case. As I close my perspective on this, like I said, I'd love to see some more work done here where we have individuals like Attorney Camacho and others that would come forward and, of course, you know, those who are proponents of the bill to come forward and discuss it further to kind of, you know, determine what is the balanced perspective on this issue. I will say that it's really important to know and understand that very, very few times, in fact, almost never, does a law-abiding, trained individual who owns a firearm for protection of their property and their family commit crimes with those firearms. Law-abiding citizens who possess firearms to protect their family and to protect their property, they're more than likely protecting themselves from criminals. People who, for whatever reason, have decided to use whatever means, whether it be a firearm, a knife, a machete, a pipe, any type of device that they could commit violence with for the purposes of all kinds of nefarious reasons. It could be to rob you. It could be to steal your property. It could because they have an addiction problem. And instead of us handling and concentrating on those problems as well as mental defect, they end up in society and they end up being out there, having the ability to take what belongs to you, and sometimes maybe even the most precious thing that you have, which is another loved one, a child, a mother, a father, a grandmother, a grandfather, somebody who you love. So law-abiding citizens who avail themselves of the training and all of the requirements needing to have a firearm because they've decided that they need that to protect their life and their property and most especially their family are not individuals who, under most, if not all circumstances, would use firearms for this reason. In closing, I know that, and this is tough, but I think it's important to hear tough stuff. I don't know if you watch national programming in terms of getting your news information and the like, and there's an opportunity to see balance. You can go to CNN and see a very liberal point of view. You can go to Fox News and see a very, very conservative point of view. But one of the things that's being discussed today, particularly on Fox News and has been for the last couple of days, is a very painful situation where it looks like there was an ability to really curtail what happened in Uvalde at that school, that horrific situation that none of us ever want to see happen for all the rest of the days of our life. But it turns out that there was a severe breakdown in so many issues in the chain of how safety and security can be provided to protect our children, most especially in an environment such as going to school and trying to learn to better their lives. So I wanted to provide this opportunity to discuss this pro and con on this issue so that you hopefully will take away from this process exactly what this is all about and what happens here. I'm sure we'll continue to debate this issue, but I wanted to provide my perspective today where, having to make a decision on how I feel about this bill at this time, I'm going to place my position as agreeing with Attorney Camacho, that our laws are strict, our laws are strong, and if the need for this bill to become law may eventually be something in the future, it should require more deliberation, more debate and more facts to balance what the issue is presented before us. So, Madam Speaker, with that, I just wanted to provide that opportunity while we had the audience here of our young people to get a taste of what happens here in the eventuality that this bill would either have further hearings, or even if it made it to the floor, I would envision that this would be the debate. Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker.
Sidoos Masi, Senator Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I do have some concerns that the Office of the Attorney General is not here to help or to assist in this, in this matter. We do have the testimony from Attorney Camacho, Anthony Camacho, and I appreciate his testimony. Just to reiterate some of the same concerns, that Guam does have one of the strictest firearms policy, and the recent incident in Paseo that occurred happened with an individual who was not authorized to carry a firearm. And mostly, those that do have firearms identification cards, they are experienced personnel with how to, with how to operate a firearm, understand the necessity and the purpose of the firearm. And so, really, the challenge here is to, to get the Office of the Attorney General to opine on the matter, and perhaps we can have a roundtable hearing to discuss this further. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Ada?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Madam Chair. I agree with my colleagues. I'm gonna reiterate what they have said. Perhaps what needs to happen is that we continue to have roundtable discussions, and this bill remains in committee until we have a second public hearing where the Office of the Attorney General, the Superior Court of Guam, also Guam Police Department. We haven't heard any testimony from Guam Police Department. And the community at large, I believe that when we have the community's input, it makes the process more informative as to how we debate on this legislation when it goes to the floor. I'm surprised with the, the absence of all the law enforcement agencies and, and our judiciary not being here on this important piece of legislation. And I hope that, Madam Speaker, that you'll be able to schedule several roundtables and an additional public hearing prior to this bill being even reported out of our committee for discussion on the floor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I echo the concerns and issues raised by our colleagues with regards to this bill. I think we can all understand the importance of wanting to ensure safety of our community. And we repeatedly, I mean, it's almost a weekly event, certainly nationally in the United States, to see continued gun violence, and certainly what we see when we have these mass shootings. tenemos estos asesinatos masivos es muy disturbante. Quiero decir, queremos pensar que somos parte de una nación progresista, y sin embargo en todo el mundo Estados Unidos lidera este tipo de violencia en una base regular. Pero también estoy de acuerdo que debido a la importancia de esto, y cómo definimos y cómo creamos un equilibrio entre cuáles son nuestros derechos y cuáles son nuestros derechos ahora para sostener y poseer una arma versus individuos en nuestra comunidad, desafortunadamente por cualquier razón que pueda ser mental, no sé, pero, ya sabes, puede fácilmente traer daño a la gente. Siempre he pensado en eso en la legislatura de Guam, en los tiempos y en los años en los que he estado aquí, porque es tan fácil acceder al salón de escucha pública, como debería ser, deberíamos ser abiertos a nuestra gente. Pero temo que con los años que pasan que vamos a terminar en una situación donde probablemente tendremos que tener escanners probablemente en la entrada de cada instalación pública, probablemente en cada escuela debido a este tipo de abuso y miedo. Quiero decir, ¿puedes imaginar tomar a tus hijos a la escuela sin saber si van a ser seguros o alguien o cualquier reunión en un lugar público donde alguien por cualquier razón saca una arma y la usa contra personas inocentes que no tienen manera de proteger o defenderse? Este proyecto requiere más discusión porque creo que hay un asunto que necesitamos determinar, y también cada vez que hacemos legislación, ¿tenemos los recursos para implementarlo? Ahora mismo con órdenes de protección, y he oído de miembros de nuestra comunidad que han tenido órdenes de protección, quiero decir, esto es sobre prevención, es como se define, pero hemos tenido individuos en nuestra comunidad que tienen órdenes de protección debido a la violencia contra ellos en el pasado, y su frustración con el sistema en términos de cuán responsivo es nuestro gobierno cuando un individuo, un miembro inocente de nuestra comunidad, está ofendido por alguien y reofendido por alguien, y la capacidad de responder. Y a veces esos casos, en particular casos domésticos, terminaron en violencia y a veces muerte. No sé a nadie aquí que no conozca a alguien que haya estado en esa situación. Pero, ¿cómo abordamos la línea fina? Esa es la gran pregunta. Creo que todos queremos estar seguros. Quiero decir, me siento mucho menos seguro en esta isla que nunca he tenido en mi vida o en la mayoría de los años de mi vida en la que he vivido aquí. Y mucha gente en nuestra comunidad se siente así. Muchos buenos ciudadanos abiertos a la ley en esta comunidad no se sienten seguros. Y la policía no puede estar por todas partes. Ya sabes, no hay una cantidad infinita de dinero que va a poder pagar por todo cuando no puedes y a veces no sabes qué pasa en la mente de alguien. Nuestros películas, nuestras televisiones, nuestros libros, todo lo que leemos, hay tanta violencia en ello. Estoy en un tiempo y edad en mi vida en la que estoy cambiando de canal porque estoy cansado de mirar programas que involucran violencia extrema y asesinato, y ese es el curso de ver. Siempre me gustaba ver Law &amp; Order. No me gusta verlo más. ¿Cuántas veces más voy a ver cómo un ser humano puede ser matado, manipulado, abusado? Así que ese es el desafío que tenemos, pero definitivamente estoy de acuerdo, Madre Presidente, debido al intento de este proyecto, y ciertamente aprecio a nuestros jóvenes líderes en la comunidad por traer este asunto adelante, pero definitivamente necesitamos tener más compromiso y discusión con los principales funcionarios de la policía, incluidos el oficio del fiscal general. Aprecio el testimonio escrito, pero no puedo cuestionar y involucrar el testimonio escrito de la misma forma que podemos, de tener a estos individuos en un foro abierto y poder tener estas preguntas y respuestas y el retroceso que creo que es necesario para realmente vetar esta legislación adecuadamente antes de que movamos hacia adelante. También quiero decir, sé que el senador Tello tenía preocupaciones similares. Ella se disculpa porque no está aquí, está bajo el clima hoy, pero ciertamente está viendo esta escucha y el procedimiento. Así que con eso, Madre Presidente, gracias por la oportunidad de comentar sobre este proyecto.
Gracias, senador. Senador Moylan?
Gracias, Madam presidenta. Apprecito a los jóvenes que participan y están pensando en algunas ideas y buscando formas en las que podemos proteger nuestra isla, nuestros residentes y los jóvenes. Creo que este asunto es más de un problema de salud conductual que nuestra sociedad está enfrentando, y necesitamos abordar en nuestra isla cómo podemos hacer esto en Guam. Es una buena discusión para tener, y al final realmente solo queremos proteger a nuestros residentes. En este momento, es mejor que continuemos esta discusión y que siento que el proyecto debería permanecer en comité hasta que tengamos más discusión. Gracias, Madam presidenta.
Gracias. Y así para aquellos que están aquí, tenemos jóvenes internos aquí participando al atender la escucha y viendo, y para aquellos que están viendo en casa. Por supuesto, no leíamos el proyecto completo. Así que las provisiones que tendrás que leer por ti mismos están disponibles en línea en el sitio web del Departamento de la Leyenda de Guam. Así que cuando venimos aquí, asumimos que todos los senadores han leído el proyecto, tienen copias delante de ellos, y así nos introducimos directamente en el debate de las provisiones sin realmente leerlas completamente, ¿verdad? Pero espero que pudieras adivinar al menos lo que está haciendo el proyecto. Es establecer una orden de protección, lo que significa que puedes ir a la corte y obtener una enmienda o parar a alguien, sacar su arma temporalmente si crees que son una amenaza. Ahora, eso es realmente resumirlo, ¿verdad? Pero ese es el sentido de lo que dice. Y son amenazas, y eso es para que los tribunales determinen si son una amenaza. Se dan, bueno, reconocidos, algunos de los estándares reconocidos son, ya sabes, enfermedad Pero como dijo el oficio general en el testimonio escrito, hay un proyecto uniforme que fue hecho por el Departamento de Justicia de Estados Unidos. Así que ese es el Departamento de Justicia Federal, y hicieron un proyecto uniforme, lo que es su recomendación para, si quieres implementar legislación como esta, esta es su recomendación de cómo todos los estados deben hacerlo. Quieren que sea uniforme en todos los estados. Así es como lo llaman, el proyecto uniforme. Así que, y como has oído, mis colegas están, ya sabes, pidiendo más información, y quiero que te den cuenta, así que el proceso requiere que demos noticia, y así damos noticia pública, y eso es realmente lo que se requiere. Pero nuestro comité se sale de su camino cuando vemos un proyecto como este, y sabemos que va a tener impactos en la policía, impactos en los propietarios de armas, impactos en la salud y la bienestar conductual. Todas esas personas que compran el proyecto son mandadas a jugar algún papel. Así que nos salimos de nuestra manera como comité para notificarlos e invitarlos a estar aquí hoy para que podamos tener la discusión que mis colegas están pidiendo, ¿verdad? Queremos ser capaces de cuestionar y más allá de lo que se pone en escritura muchas Y tenemos que pesar, por supuesto, los pros y los contras. Así que te voy a decir las preguntas que habría preguntado si estuvieran aquí también. Y nuevamente, invitamos, ya sabes, el oficio general del fiscal, el judiciary, el Centro de Salud y Bienestar de Guam, la asociación de la Barra de Guam, esos son todos los abogados, si tenían algún input, el defensor público, quien es representante de la defensa indigente, y el Departamento de Policía de Guam, que, por supuesto, son los que controlan la propiedad de la arma en Guam, son los que te dan licencias de armas en Guam. Así que además del impacto fiscal, realmente queríamos saber cosas cuando miramos la ley uniforme y la comparamos con esta ley, este proyecto, no es lo mismo. Así que queríamos saber de los patrocinadores, ¿por qué su proyecto no incluye, por ejemplo, penaltias que se recomiendan en la ley uniforme, penaltias por reclámates falsos, como yo reclamo que, ya sabes, alguien es una amenaza para mí o ha sido una amenaza para mí, pero si hago, y eso permite al tribunal suspender sus licencias para llevar una arma, ¿cuál es la pena si hago ese reclamo falsamente, ¿verdad? Así que este proyecto no incluye esa pena, y eso es lo que queríamos preguntar. Esa es una recomendación del Departamento de Justicia para incluir en tales proyectos las penaltias por reclámates falsos. Pero hay otros estados que han implementado proyectos como este. Contamos 19 estados estadounidenses y Washington DC hasta junio de 2022 que se llaman órdenes de protección de violencia de armas o leyes de flagas rojas o órdenes de protección de riesgo extremo. Algunas de las otras jurisdicciones, así que aquí solo son miembros de familia que pueden hacer este reclamo y hacer este informe en este proyecto, pero en las otras jurisdicciones les han permitido a los miembros de familia y educadores, personal de escuela, colaboradores de la policía, casi todos ellos tienen la policía, y/o médicos y profesionales de salud mental también pueden hacer esas reclamas o esos informes, ¿verdad? Así que este proyecto es muy limitado a los miembros de familia solo, y solo queríamos tener una discusión sobre eso. ¿Por qué sería más beneficioso en Guam incluyendo al GPD, por ejemplo, y estas otras personas que se mencionaron, educadores? All right. Y luego el Departamento de Justicia, los tiempos en el proyecto, el orden de protección durará tres años, pero en otras jurisdicciones los órdenes de protección duran uno, a veces cinco años. Así que es todo por el espectro, y solo queríamos saber cómo decidieron en tres años. Queríamos saber, como qué ha testimoniado el abogado Camacho, ¿es esto duplicativo? ¿Es esa provisión que cita suficiente? Así que queríamos preguntar a los otros interesados, por supuesto, si están de acuerdo que eso es suficiente, porque esa es una opinión de un abogado, y queríamos preguntar. Quería preguntar al GPD y el oficio general si están de acuerdo que eso es suficiente, que ese orden de protección sea lo suficientemente rápido, es, ya sabes, lo suficientemente amplio para proteger a aquellos que podrían estar en riesgo, como señalado por este proyecto. También quería preguntar sobre, en otras jurisdicciones, solo, bueno, ya sabes, uno de los asuntos que han sido presentados por los departamentos de policía en esas jurisdicciones donde han implementado leyes como esta es que si quieren que la policía use su juicio respecto a si hay un riesgo, entonces la policía necesita tener más entrenamiento para hacerlo. Y así el proyecto no mande ese entrenamiento, y así quería preguntar si eso estaría disponible para ellos o cómo podríamos hacerlo disponible, y quería preguntar al Departamento de Salud y Bienestar de Guam si podrían hacer que ese entrenamiento esté disponible para el Departamento de Policía de Guam, o si el Departamento de Policía tiene sus propios recursos para ese tipo de entrenamiento. Así que el proyecto permite que, según la revisión de los resultados de las pruebas, el Superior Tribunal o magistrado puede emitir una orden de violencia de armas según hallar que hay una sospecha razonable de que la posesión de una arma por el individuo nombrado posesiona un riesgo significativo de daño personal al individuo nombrado o ¿Puede ser emitido un orden de protección de violencia de armas temporalmente sin una escucha previa a la emitida? Así que la razón por la que este proyecto, este tipo de ley ha sido mantenida en otras jurisdicciones como constitucional es porque supuestamente tiene protección de dueño de procesos en esas jurisdicciones, lo que significa que el dueño de procesos, tú tienes que tener una escucha antes de que tomen cualquier de tus derechos. Y así debido a las escuchas tribunales, y así es lo que estoy preguntando, si estas escuchas van a estar disponibles para ellos, porque creo que eso es necesario, esa protección de dueño antes de que sus derechos sean removidos. Y luego, por supuesto, quería preguntar al GPD, Salud y Bienestar, si son capaces o quién es mejor adaptado para conducir estos chequeos de salud, o para determinar si hay una sospecha razonable de que el individuo posesiona un riesgo significativo de daño, ¿verdad? ¿Quién debería tomar esa determinación? Y luego quería saber si un peticiario venía adelante, un miembro de la familia, y, ya sabes, hizo esta acusación sobre otro miembro de la familia, y si es verdad, ¿esa persona que viene adelante es protegida? ¿También ellos, o ¿su nombre va a ser publicado en los procedimientos de la corte, o ¿están protegidos, ¿verdad?, de un riesgo más, una amenaza? Y así fueron algunas de las preguntas. Solo quería compartir eso con ustedes para que sepan, sí, hay preguntas sin respuesta que nos gustaría saber, y luego tenemos que tomar una decisión basada en qué es mejor para nuestras jurisdicciones. Así que comparamos las jurisdicciones para ver qué está disponible y cómo otras jurisdicciones tratan el mismo tipo de preguntas y el mismo tipo de interés que necesitan balancear, y luego tendremos que tomar una decisión. Así que ahora mismo que hemos tenido una escucha pública, nuevamente invitamos a todos. Podemos intentarlo de nuevo, o podemos avanzar, ¿verdad?, con el informe del comité diciendo que esto es donde se encuentra, y podemos ver cómo el comité decide votar en either este proyecto o una versión amendada de este proyecto. Si yo fuera a amendar este proyecto, te diré ahora mismo, miraría el proyecto uniforme recomendado por el Departamento de Justicia y tratar de hacerlo lo más cercano posible porque voy a adivinar que eso resistirá cualquier tipo de desafíos legales más que, ya sabes, despedirse de esa ley uniforme. Pero es por eso, ya sabes, cuanto más información tengamos, mejor en estos tipos de asuntos. All right. Pero no hay más preguntas o comentarios del panel. Senador Shelton, ¿quería cerrar como patrocinador del proyecto?
Gracias mucho, Madre Presidente. De nuevo, gracias por escuchar este proyecto. Solo quería hacer una clarificación de que la declaración que dije al principio fue mi declaración para presentar el proyecto y no la declaración del Congreso de la Juventud de Guam, pero dio los hechos del proyecto. Así que nuevamente, muchas gracias, y espero el proceso que el comité llevará a cabo.
Bueno, lo siento. Me gustaría leer la carta entonces del Congreso de la Juventud de Guam porque es el patrocinador del proyecto. Oh, ¿vas a leer? Sí, está bien. Así que senador Shelton leería, leí las cartas de los otros testimonios. No quiero ir sin leer su testimonio. Así que ese es el vicepresidente del Congreso de la Juventud de Guam, pero este fue un proyecto aprobado por toda la Leyenda de la Juventud de Guam, lo que es por qué está antes de nosotros hoy.
El 21 de junio de 2022, para el presidente Teresa M. Terlalhi, Comité de Salud, Tierra y Justicia, y Cultura, Minutante Saisnala Hasatour Ngahon, acerca de el testimonio y apoyo del proyecto 264-36 COR. Buenos Aires, presidente Terlalhi, y los miembros del comité. Soy Al Edrich Lebang, vicepresidente del 33º Congreso de la Juventud de Guam y patrocinador del proyecto 264-36 COR. Hoy estamos enfrentados a un proyecto que permitiría órdenes de protección de armas para cualquier individuo. Solo para abordar el elefante en la habitación, órdenes de protección de violencia pueden ser usadas como herramienta para prevenir la violencia y salvar vidas. Según el Departamento de Justicia de Estados Unidos, la investigación ha demostrado que los estados pueden salvar vidas autorizando a los tribunales a emitir órdenes de protección de riesgo extremo, que en otro término son órdenes de protección de armas, temporariamente evitando a una persona en crisis acceder a armas. La policía, proveedores de salud, líderes de la comunidad, defensores de las víctimas y otros no pueden ayudar a formular el alcance apropiado de una legislación de un estado en particular, pero también ser critica en asegurarse de que la gente en la comunidad esté consciente del proceso para petición de un ERPO. El Centro de Law y Derechos de Giffords para prevenir la violencia de armas y el Every Town for Gun Safety Support Fund son ambas organizaciones que describen su misión como salvar vidas y reducir la violencia de armas. El Centro de Law y Derechos de Giffords describió órdenes de protección de riesgo extremo como herramientas de salvación de vidas que pueden prevenir tragedias de armas antes de que ocurran, y argumentó que las leyes estaban siendo usadas para prevenir asesinatos masivos, suicidios, terrorismo y otros tipos de violencia de armas. El Every Town for Gun Safety Support Fund escribió en su sitio web, cuando una persona está en crisis, los queridos en la policía son a menudo los primeros a ver los signos de advertencia. Las leyes ERPO empoderan a los miembros de la familia y la policía para petir una orden que temporariamente elimina las armas de una situación peligrosa y reduce el riesgo de suicidio. En respuesta a argumentos de que órdenes de protección de riesgo extremo violan el derecho al dueño de procesos, el Every Town for Gun Safety Support Fund señaló provisiones en leyes de protección de riesgo extremo, permitiendo a individuos sujetos a la orden aparecer en la corte para una escucha legal completa. La Alianza por Responsabilidad de Armas, un grupo que apoyó la iniciativa 1491, una medida de 2016 en Washington State, sobre si los tribunales deberían ser autorizados para emitir órdenes de protección de riesgo extremo, argumentó que órdenes de protección de riesgo extremo incluían protección cuidadosa para el dueño de procesos y estándares de evidencia. Además, la Asociación de la Barra americana obliga a los gobiernos estatales, locales, territoriales y tribales a implementar leyes, reglas y regulaciones autorizantes para los tribunales a emitir órdenes de protección de violencia de armas, incluyendo órdenes de expartición. Además, la Universidad Johns Hopkins de Bloomberg, Escuela de Salud Pública, encuentra que muchas personas que posibilitan el riesgo de dañarse o de alguien más con una arma pueden legalmente poseer armas. possess guns and would pass a background check required to purchase a new gun. State laws often do not provide a clear legal mechanism to restrict access to guns before a tragedy occurs, even when it is clear that an individual is at risk of causing harm to self or others. An extreme risk protection order is a civil order with due process protections issued by a court when someone is at risk of violence to himself or others. Depending on the state's ERPO law, family members, dating partners, household members, law enforcement, healthcare professionals, coworkers, and school administrators may petition the court to temporarily restrict a person's access to firearms when he or she is behaving dangerously and at the risk of committing violence. Recent gun violence on the island has occurred within the past year, where a lifeless man was found in Swamp Road, Dedido, where a man used an unregistered pistol to kill another individual, the shooter Matthew Augustine Manabusin with prior records. Another incident involving a man on pre-trial release, according to a magistrate's complaint, police responded to the Dedido Skate Park on April 27, 2021, for a complaint involving two cars. Benny Joshua Solis Nauta, 30, was the driver of a silver Toyota Corolla. A caller to police reported seeing the same vehicle speeding through the village, trying to stop a car. The caller also reported hearing a gunshot, and the other car was the woman who said she was trying to leave to get groceries when she got into an argument with Nauta. Nauta then allegedly followed the victim, who also had three children in the car, and then got in front of the car at a nearby church. As the police apprehended Nauta, he stated that he did not have guns, but as he stepped out of the vehicle, he whispered where it was located. Nauta was charged with possession of a firearm without a firearm identification card as a third-degree felony with notice of commission of felony while on felony release. Last July 14, 2021, a viral video that shows a man pointing a pellet rifle at cars that are passing through just here in Hagatna, imagine if that gun was a real gun. Madam Speaker and members of the committee, these instances are the reason why we should have a gun protection order on our island. Others may say that we should broaden this and include other weapons. I disagree with this statement because it diverts us away from the issue of gun control. By broadening the scope of this bill would make it not adhere to the standing rules, but would allow it to make a non-one-subject matter bill. And if you wish to include other weapons, I suggest that you create your own separate bill that addresses it. But let us not forget the horrific school mass shooting events in our nation's history. Columbine in 1999, Sandy Hook in 2012, the Stoneman Douglas in 2018. As a teacher, we must protect our school and our students. Students do not need to learn how to dodge a bullet with a fast average velocity of 2,350 feet per second, but rather learn the content that they are supposed to learn in school. As of April 2021, there have been 150 mass shootings that happened within 2021. And I agree with President Joe Biden, the gun violence in the United States is an epidemic that is becoming an international embarrassment. More recently, the Uvalde, Texas, mass shooting last May 24, 2022, where an 18-year-old gunman went on a rampage shooting at the Robb Elementary School, where it took the lives of 19 students, ages nine to 11 years old, and two teachers. Prior to the shooting incident, Salvador Ramos, the perpetrator, had shown signs of potential harm through posting pictures of semi-automatic rifles on social media. The Gun Protection Order Act would allow for courts to temporarily seize a firearm from an individual who posed a threat to themselves or others. The bill sets up procedures that are necessary for gun protection orders to be issued. Additionally, it provides a due process for an individual to request a hearing to challenge such orders. Furthermore, the bill seeks to create a database of gun protection orders issued by the court. The purpose of this bill is to avoid mass shootings on the island and keep our community safe. As a teacher, it distraught me to see news of mass shootings that take place in schools where innocent lives are lost due to someone who possesses harm to themselves or others. As others may argue, the bill infringes on our rights to bear arms. I feel that the Constitution is a living document that changes its meaning due to the unique challenges of time. As one of my fellow teachers teaches the students of our island in the picture attached below, it shows how the meaning of the Second Amendment changes over time. Senators, the Second Amendment, and I quote, "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." A well-regulated means that we shall put regulations on gun ownership. Bill 264-36COR does not impede the Second Amendment rights on any individual. Even though gun violence data on our island is low at the moment, we shall do anything that we could to keep it low and prevent a more severe act of gun violence from taking place. Let us not deny that we have a gun control problem, not only on our island, but the whole nation. Let us not find reason to divert from the passing of the Gun Protection Act of 2021. Sizouas Maasi. This is Vice Speaker Al Lebang of the 33rd Guam Youth Congress.
Thank you very much, Senator Shelton, for reading that. That's the letter by the sponsor of the bill, and the Guam Youth Congress. Attached to his letter was also an illustration of a gun that was available, a gun on the date that the Second Amendment was passed, and guns today. It was an illustration. I also wanted to point out, so I told you, we look at what they have done in other states, but we are also impacted by what is done federally, right? Gun control is a federal issue a lot of the time in a lot of ways. And so right now, in the Senate, in the U.S. Senate, they've released a compromise bill, meaning a compromise between the Republicans and the Democrats in regards to legislation that is aimed at, it's aimed at doing different things in regards to guns and making safety and safety issues. But one of them, I'm going to read part of it, it says that it will, it's an 80-page bill, would enhance background checks, give authorities 10 days to review juvenile mental health records of gun purchasers younger than 21, pour federal dollars into helping states implement so-called red flag laws. That's the type of law we're talking about today. So in this, if this is passed in the Senate, they're going to put money to the states to implement these types of laws, which allow authorities to temporarily confiscate guns from people deemed dangerous. The measure would also, for the first time, ensure that serious dating partners are included in a federal law that bars domestic abusers from purchasing firearms. They also agreed to provide millions of dollars for expanding mental health resources in communities and schools. In addition, funds devoted to boosting school safety. They would toughen penalties for those evading licensing requirements or making illegal straw purchases, buying and then selling weapons to people barred from purchasing handguns. So that's just a very quick, that's from the New York Times, so you can also look that article up. And so, but it's relevant because it looks like they, if they are going to put funds towards implementing these types of laws in the states, in every state, then that might also encourage us to implement that type of a law. Anyway, so there being, I want to thank my colleagues for being here today, and thank all of you in attendance today, and there being no additional individuals to present testimony, the committee will consider Bill Number 264-36COR duly heard. The public hearing is now adjourned. Testimony can be submitted up to 10 days. The time is now 10:06 a.m. Sizouas Maasi.